This conference will now be recorded.
Let the ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, where our weekly or else available by go-to meeting also and for labor date dealing. We have agenda in front of us, motion to approve the agenda. So move. You have a second?
Okay.
The only thing is we're going to move 11 and 12 up to first on the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Still approved that, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side, motion carries. Approve the minutes of the July 9th meeting? Hello? Motion is our second?
Our second.
Any discussion?
We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 11, approved treasurer's monthly report for June.
Morning.
Good morning.
Alright, so report for June, motor vehicle fees paid state. 1.78 million. That is wrong. 101,000 plus, I'll give you the right number. But the rest of the numbers are correct. Oh, that's our year end. Which one did I give? I was looking at year end one. I was trying to make you guys a year end one, but for the whole fiscal year, so. We paid the last year, the fiscal year, we paid 1.7 million dollars to the state. And we got about 40,000 of that, just for your guys' information. So. Disregard the money, this is the year end one, so disregard it. I'll bring the June one back next week. I can just do the semi-annual. Do you have any questions about the semi-annual? Net balance was 10.5 million, cash in drawer in the office was 17,806. And CDs were 2.25 million, so total cash on hand was 12,798,680.93.
Motion to approve the treasurer's monthly report for June? Shane, can you look at this for me? Because I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'll wait for that.
That one?
Oh, she has last year's out of my book. Yep. I apologize. I have 2023 in my book. 11,573, 11,572,361,84 is net balance cash drawer with 1,700. Mark and I got to count that. And certificates of deposit, we have 2.3 million CDs. And like I said, I ladder those, so I have two to three CDs every month except for March and September because those are tax collections and I, we have enough going on in our office to have to take bids. So cash on hand for the county was 13,912,923.27 as of June 30th, 2024. Those are the numbers.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye. Motion passes. Motion to approve the semi-annual report?
That was the semi-annual. We skipped the June month report because I, the data I had given you guys was for the year end, not for the month end, so. You want to go over that? You can. We went, yes. No, I'm not gonna, because I'm not confident in that data.
Okay.
I apologize.
Postpone that, delay the meeting.
Yep. I'll see you next Tuesday. Thank you for moving me up. Appreciate it.
Attorney general discussion.
Morning. I have court hearings at nine. Williams got some as well, so I'll probably be kind of quickly here. I think, alright, Sidney had a question this morning. I think I answered that. More questions, let me know. I did, I think, send out last week just something actually Rachel forwarded to me. I think someone forwarded to her. Maybe she found it on her own. Anyway, I, she, she, I hadn't seen it, but it was a good summary of some of the changes to chapter 21, you know, dealing with. Hybrid meetings, online meetings and stuff. I knew there was changes. I hadn't seen that nice little summary that was, that was that way, you know, and so I, I think everybody got it anyway. It's probably good to look at. I know, Jim, you sent me stuff for 20 AD agreement. That's in some stage of dictation. I don't remember exactly where it is. I mean, it goes between Becky and I, you know, usually several times. And one thing, yeah, I got time. I noticed that one thing that's on the agenda today is about the discussion about an HR attorney. Just a couple of thoughts about that. I think we've talked about that before and I kind of indicated, I thought that was generally probably a lot of times a good idea because they'll have certain expertise on things that the rest of us don't have. Of course, keep in mind, they'll charge you for each time you talk to them, so you don't want to just necessarily talk to them for anything. I mean, I guess you can. It's just that they'll, they'll charge it. But, you know, when it comes to certain human resources matters, especially when it comes to federal regulations, different things like that, they're going to be probably a good resource. I always do the best I can on that, but I'm never going to necessarily put my expertise on that stuff against, you know, somebody who isn't expert. One thing I'll say though is I do know, and I'm familiar with this in, in other counties, because I've, I dealt with it as a private attorney and also working with other counties on their stuff. Sometimes what, what you do have to watch out for, and most most government HR attorneys are going to know this, private, I mean, corporate HR attorneys probably wouldn't know it. Government HR attorneys would know it. So depends on who you're talking to. But if, if a board of supervisors or a particular attorney decides, for example, what I've seen is they'll decide that they want to put a handbook in place to govern the whole county. Can't do it. Each department runs their own department. I point that out because sometimes certain counties will hire an HR attorney for the thought that, well, we can bring the county, everybody under one umbrella and under one supervision. Can't do it. Each, each department's going to make their own decision, so. If ever an HR attorney says, well, yeah, you know, you can make this department do that, they would be wrong. But it is good, each department, for example, with the auditor, treasurer, whoever, they may sometimes have certain HR questions that are particularly complicated that they can't answer and I can't answer, and so sometimes they may ask an HR attorney within their own department. So just something to think about if you go down that road, you know, think about, well, what are we wanting to do this for? Just, you know, you know, remember what an attorney can and cannot do. Any attorney, whether it's me, whether it's them, or somebody else, you know, there's only so much authority each one of us has, so. If you have any questions, let me know. With that, I don't have anything else. I'll be here for a little while. Like I said, I have to run upstairs for some court hearings. And Williams got several other too. I think he's up there now, so. Kind of a hurried morning.
With the HR attorney thing, I said, my idea, because of meetings I go to with other counties, very few counties, I, I don't know many that don't have an HR attorney. Like, did a lot of them use this one?
Yeah.
And I can think of at least four.
No, I, I. I, I. I think it's, I, I think it's probably a good idea because, because there are just certain things. There's going to be certain questions that are going to involve questions that, for example, I would have a, you know, for example, last thing I would want to do is necessarily get in the matter of a spit match between people, so sometimes, you know, go to an HR attorney is, is, is good. They have, they're going to have certain expertise that, that the rest of us don't have. Particularly, for example, when it comes to like employment laws. I used to do a lot of employment law. I don't so much anymore. Probably haven't for close to 10 years. And at the time I did it, you know, I was dialed in on that stuff pretty good. 10 years later, probably not as much when it comes to certain federal labor laws, federal civil rights laws. I'm still dialed in some, but not as much as I was. So there's going to be certain things where it's like, well, yeah, we better get more expert advice. So I'm, I'm not saying don't do it, because I think I said before it was a good idea, and I think it is. Just, you know, remember, you know, what they do and what they don't. Jim?
Sheriff, something.
Good morning, everyone. One item for this morning in terms of the rest Kephar property and when the contract is awarded for cleanup. I think there's still some vehicles down there. And the process to get those vehicles maybe into the contractor's name, if they so choose to do that or getting destroyed, is an abandoned vehicle notice that the sheriff's office will complete for the contractor or whoever the prospective owner might be moving forward. But what that does, once we send that to the previous registered owner by code, that's where it goes. If that person responds, they're entitled their property back. So if the contractors have looked at those vehicles and think they can recover some of their costs, cleanup through the sale of those vehicles or whatever. How do we handle that when the law says they have the right to have their vehicle back, but he's signed off on anything that remains there after the 25th of June?
So like, I haven't been by there for a while. How many are in there?
Don't know.
One.
Just one down there?
Watajakota, one.
There is?
Yep.
Just one?
Yep.
They got the buses there. Will they do the bus?
Anything that would be registered through the state.
The semi-trailer.
So. Well, it seemed like the best thing to do, and, and, and I'm thinking off the cuff here, so if somebody else says, no, 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 that's not going to work, I, I'll need to chime in. Could, could that person just be notified now? I haven't read that code section for quite a while. How long do they have?
They have 10 days.
10 days. Could they be notified now and then? Like, they just need to have the opportunity to get it before somebody cleans it up, right?
Right.
When was that going to start?
Don't know yet.
So.
We'll figure that out.
Contractors have already looked at the property, right?
Yeah.
Codes are in.
We have the codes.
So they know what value's there and what isn't.
Alright, so what you're saying is that they've already bid on what's there. Well, then they would. I can't imagine it's that much funny, but you got something?
Isn't there a form? So if I take possession of a vehicle and I set it on my property, I have fees acquainted with that vehicle, correct? So isn't there a form that you, that the sheriff can self-sign saying that this vehicle is deemed abandoned? Then I can apply for, apply for a title in, in, in my name?
Yeah, after the 10 days.
Yeah, I gotta say.
Yes, after the 10 days, yes. So there's, there's a form that you, the sheriff, if he works with you, that signs it and then you have, they have so many days that they can come after it, then they deem it gone.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, Matt. What do you do in the 10 days if he shows up and wants his stuff? Code says you have to give it to him.
So does that mean, does that mean he has to get it out of there himself in those 10 days?
Well, yeah, I mean, say it, I mean, if you.
But haven't you already told him 10 days?
No.
No.
You, you never told him you got this until this day to get your stuff off the property?
No, he hasn't been notified of anything at this point.
Then what, what, what was the letter that said that he had till the 12th, I think it was, to remove all, everything off for you, and now that you're going on there, it's trespassing, correct?
Well, we're talking about, I think we're talking about.
Oh, the previous order of vehicles.
Yeah.
You're talking, not the Kephar.
Kephar doesn't have anything to do with it.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
We're talking about the previous owner. I think what the sheriff's saying is, okay, look, these guys have bid on this with certain things. And if this, if this dude, some guy wants his car back, that changes everything.
So it would.
And then that's a good point, so what's going to have to happen is the person get their notice and all that. If they want it back, then you may want to talk to these people that have bid. They're going to have to take that off their bid.
Yeah, that's not for me to do.
Right.
I'll handle the paperwork.
I, I, I know that. I'm not saying that, but I say they would have to say, they would have to say, yeah, I still want to do it.
Can I throw a wrench in there? So I buy a vehicle from you, okay? I'm going to junk it because I'm Kephar or I'm a junker, right? So I set it on my property for 10 years. You don't have ownership of that vehicle. I bought it from you. So like, if it was stolen, if it was stolen, then, then that's a different story, but if it wasn't stolen, you bought that vehicle, Kephar owned that vehicle.
The sheriff is saying, the sheriff is saying he doesn't know whether Kephar does or not, right?
Why would it be sitting there?
I don't have any idea, man.
I just. He's still on it.
There's some things we'll have to figure out. There are some things we're going to have to figure out. Yes. We'll have to figure things out. So I'll just wait for direction, whatever you guys.
Yeah, I mean.
Review the code.
Do we know who's it is?
Yeah, I don't know what's down there. We got to get bid numbers.
Saying that, you know, it's covered and like, well, I have to get 10 days. I think the first thing to do is get that.
Right. So if, if somebody puts in a bid and they get the bid, okay, so this person decides to remove this bus and put it on their property. Because legally, you got to give them 10 days and you got to have him sign a piece of paper that it's been abandoned, blah, 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 go that way, okay? So when you did the bid, I can remove that vehicle, put it on my property, and I can go through this, go through the stance of saying, hey, you got 10 days to come pay, pay this. Or I, I redeem it and I can do what I want with this, right?
Perhaps, but it also could be that maybe the county just says, we're not going to give you the bid at all.
Yeah, I'm just.
I mean, what I'm saying is I don't know that you're in a position to dictate how things are going to go. If you're a bidder, you know what I'm saying? I mean, so maybe you ought to tone it down a little bit and, and let the process play through. Because if somebody wants that vehicle, I would suggest figure out who's it is now, send out the notice, you got 10 days, and then 10 days later, figure out what to do there. Whoever bids on it is probably going to have to say, I'm okay not getting that bid. If somebody says, I'm not okay, then it's like, well, then you're probably not going to get the bid. That makes sense? So. Now, if you don't like that answer, then you can do whatever you want, but that's just what I'm saying.
Very good.
Thank you, Chair.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So what do you want? These are registered and these are not then?
We don't, why?
No. Department head discussion.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Conservation Board had their July meeting last week on Tuesday. We had the summit pipeline people there, a large group of people there as well for that discussion. At the end of it, the conservation board decided to table the decision till the August meeting. As the board wanted to not make a snap, quick decision on it. They wanted to do some research on their own, collect the information that was given and more information was passed to them since then, so that they can make the decision at their August meeting if they'll allow the survey or not to occur. We also talked about flood repairs and stuff like that. We do know now that we are declared, so we are doing pricing and everything of that nature on flood repairs for the parks and the dams and damage of that nature. The nature center remodel was discussed. The board is, board would get the roof done. We'll wait for the other interior ceiling needs when it's cold out. Better time to do that when it's cold, so we'll do the ceiling in the fall winter. But we need to get the roof done this summer while we still have seasonal help, so we can do that internally wise. And then board just kind of gave update on what's going on throughout the thing. We are moving forward with acquiring a new piece of property. And we did receive a grant fund to do that, and so we're working on that process right now. One of the things I know we're going to have to maybe look at, Rachel and board, is we may have to do a I can't think what it's called now. No, not a public hearing. Change to our budget, because we're going to have a large chunk of grant money coming in and then money going back up to make the purchase type thing, which we weren't aware of when we did the budget, put together our budget back in January. So we may have to do a thing on that, but once we know all the details, we'll get that information to you guys with a request and then Rachel as well too, type thing. Questions?
Well, good to see you. Alright, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Any other department head discussion?
I don't see anybody online.
Attorney general.
Morning. Getting pretty dusty out there. We probably limit how much blade we're doing to get things straightened out until you get a little bit of moisture. It's kind of odd to say that. We've had some rain, but rain runs off the roads too. We're trying to do that patch. I suppose in answer, maybe this week we've got the time, weather temperatures are, are better for us now. And then somebody asked about the shed, the salt shed. Jeff Todd, you asked last week about the salt shed. Sounds to me like they're going to deliver our T panel walls somewhere around August 5th. And then they want to come in and put the shed up toward the end of August. So we've got our sand bed laid out. We'll probably start moving our salt out of the way so we can do our part of the pre-construction part by removing the old, the old walls and coring down and getting a rock base for the T panels to sit on. So we'll be kind of busy doing that in the meantime. We might need to buy another, another cover for the salt, depending on the weather goes and on, leave it all uncovered. Having the sand bed there helps to reduce the amount of dirt, sod and stuff we get when we put the salt sand back. And so if we're mixing it anyway, we'll buy, so. Kind of where we're at, update wise.
Did you get the doors fixed?
They've been notified, the, the, they've been notified about doors and then we have had some discussion about updating walk-in doors because they've been a little bit. They've been deteriorating over the years too. It seems like they get used a lot, but we've also maybe had a, I had a brief conversation with with the foreman about maybe going to some sort of a potential keyless entry system to get in instead of, you know, everybody's pushing to put in a key, you know, if, if we can get some sort of keyless system, I don't, we haven't really gotten any pricing on it yet. But it would help if, if guys, you know, if they're on call, they forget their keys and they can't get in, things like that, or, or whatever. So kind of discussed maybe the potential of putting some sort of a keyless system in just to get in and out. You can also have it set up to where it automatically locks and unlocks at certain times of the day so that people aren't always trying to get, you know, using their keys to get in, but those are a few thousand dollar systems, and I don't know exactly what we're looking at yet, but kind of had some discussions about it just to kind of make things a little bit easier to get in and out, make things consistent. Guys can have their own specific codes to get in and then that's sometimes going to be tracked too, but just in discussions with that right now, so. And then we're going to finalize some details on some truck orders during the next week or two, get that some out. That's it?
Resolution setting date for public hearing proposed to incur non-current debt?
Heidi is online too. She wants to tell.
Good morning. This is Heidi. Can everyone hear me? Yep. So you have a resolution provided by your bond counsel to go into non-current debt, so that is the internal loan that we've discussed. So this will be setting a date for July 30th for a public hearing.
July 30th at 8:45 a.m. Resolution 1228-24. Motion for that date, time.
Time. Second.
We have motion second. Any other discussion?
Todd.
Can I add who motioned second?
Sidney and Jim.
Okay.
Aye. Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. Motion passes.
The resolution to fix a date of meeting which is proposed to take action for the insurance of an urban rental tax increment revenue not in principle, not to exceed $2,430,000.
Heidi, do you have any comments on that?
And this is just the external financing hearing. There'll be two separate hearings, so we'll be setting the date again for that July 30th date.
Do you know what the incurred cost for interest and legal counsel and your fees and everything would be on this whole thing?
I gave an update on the interest there, and then I plan to at the hearing to give a full financing update with all the, all the costs incurred. And then again, you know, for the financing fees, we're looking at that 1.2%.
I know the last time you had an estimate of 5.5 through local banks?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that ain't going to happen at 5.5. I mean, they're paying 5.4. It's 13-month CDs now, so they said, no, that'll never happen. So that's, you know, I mean, it's nice to know what something costs before you buy it. But you know, you don't go buy a car if you don't know what the sticker price is. I was just wondering what the cost is on this, on top of the.
You know, we'll be taking bids and, you know, hoping to be as close to that 525%.
But you don't know what all the other costs are going to be. You don't have a total number for costs for this.
And like I said, it was that 1.2% for the financing fee and then we'll have the legal costs on top of that.
So, so you don't have a number? You have an estimate?
Um, you know, from, from a legal standpoint, typically, you know, I'll leave it up to them to provide that. I know that they'll be providing a letter at a future date, but probably around the 25,000 mark.
That's a, you had said that last time and told this board that, so as far as 1.2 and 20 to 25 for the legal part of it, so I mean, you've already told us that information, so thank you.
Yeah, but then 5.5 on the interest rate is, that's it going to do that, what I was told.
I don't know. We have hired her to.
Okay, I just did a little research on my own just to see what.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Throwing that out there. It's nice to know a cost before you jump into something, but anyway.
Well, we're just taking the next, the, the step to set that public hearing at this point, so.
So this is just for the July 30th at 9 a.m. public hearing, resolution 12, or 1229-24.
Move to approve.
And the motion is our second?
That's second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
We'll call Sidney. Aye. Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
We have two hearings. Nine, review and possible action, capital.
Thank you, Heidi.
We have our back end, we have some votes. We got three that are available.
Four.
We have four, three of them.
Oh, yes, right.
But only three of them are with.
Good.
Three of them are good. One of them is.
The stipulation.
Oh, they put conditions on that. We.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to have to wait and take, do rebids now that we know this other information?
I believe we'll go ahead and go with the bids and we'll see what shakes out.
Aaron made the comment that the.
Aaron made the comment that, um, figure that process out and then, once that's determined, if we award somebody today, then that individual will have to be notified and say, does your quote still stand? Or do you wanna withdraw your quote? That's what he said. That's if we award something today. So I, I guess, I guess ask some question. Okay, to ask some questions?
Sure.
You're right. And I don't think it's, I don't see any problem with... Yeah, these are all public documents, so it's not any problem with me talking about this. So Mr. Alder, you, you had the little one up that we see here. Do you, do you plan on using an excavator for this?
Yes.
Okay, cause as I walk the site, there's no way that you could do that job without an excavator.
Yep, I got that under control.
Okay, alright.
I tried to say local, but, uh, didn't have one, so I had to go someplace else though. One will be brought in, yes.
That was my big thing is I don't see any way of doing it without one.
I got down trailers, I got trucks, I got trailers, I got skid loaders, I got, I just don't have the excavator, but I will be renting one.
Alright, alright.
Are you gonna take things to the landfill?
Yes, right, seven miles away, yeah.
Okay. Um, I talked to Christian. He's online today as well. Christian, if you wanna talk. Maybe. Um, we did discuss like, there's a bazillion TVs in there, that he will not take anything if anything's broken, um...
I, I have, uh, a spot to dispose of them, so. That's, I mean, I've been doing this for 22 years. I, I, I know the insides and outs, so. I knew what I was getting into when I bid the job. Like the house is full, there's tires in the, uh, quonset. It's not gonna be as easy as just, uh, I'm gonna wake up one day and tomorrow it's gonna be done. I, I, I already know that, so. Uh, I, I plan on being there till the job's done. Um, my... Is I gotta run an excavator with a thumb. That's the only way I'm gonna be able to, uh, load my trailers and then unload it. Um, the value of metal, I understand that there's things about licensing. With you, you pretty well picked over it. They're just scrap there. I mean, it's not like, yeah, so, yeah.
Rich.
I just had a question. I'm assuming since it's so confined in there, you'll probably have to work kinda from the load, when you first start, so...
I have to get the excavator in, and then talk to that guy.
And then if you're loading, you're loading stuff, is it gonna be... I'm just worried about traffic control. You're in a tight period with a lot of traffic. They have some sort of, well, advanced warning that you're gonna be working there.
My, 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 my plan of attack is starting the road in.
Yeah, I think that, but...
So then I can get some, uh, wiggle room.
As you work in, you'll, but maybe just some trucks entering in. Yeah, I think what he's saying is there needs to be some signage so people know that you're there and you're...
At first, I, I won't be able to get an excavator in there, I won't be able to get a trailer, I won't be able to get a tractor, nothing, you know?
Yep.
But my plan was to start that road that, uh, there's a trailer there, get rid of that garbage, whatever it is, and then go onto the semi and go on, you just keep my, working my way in.
And as he said, there should needs to be signage.
Just some advanced stuff so that...
Because it gets light there.
Do I know about you? I mean, so you've either put some signage up for him?
You want me to do it? Well, no, I think that's part of the project.
We've blown down signs before. But I might add that, when I was putting up that snow fence, the gentleman that's got property behind there, he said last time they went behind there and loaded trucks to keep them off the road and he would be okay with you going, talking to him and, and loading. He wouldn't be on the road then. He'd be off in his property and behind you. So that might be...
That'd be very good.
And Matt, I have one thing, um, that if you, that building or this barn or whatever, on that cemetery fence, if you could just make sure you work with...
I'll repair anything. I, I, accidents happen, I'm not gonna say, but I will repair everything I, I, I had the accident, so.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying is, uh, make sure that, cause some of it's already damaged and it's not cause of you. You know what I'm saying? So, um, you might, the board of the cemetery is different than the board of the church. So if you wanna work with the cemetery...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You'll need to work with the cemetery board.
Good.
And I, they, they, I talked to them. They already know that that fence is, so, but it'd be nice to talk to them so that you don't have to fix something that's already, you know, pushed over and...
There's three...
My biggest thing is, is, uh, I'm, I'm not into calling the sheriff for much, but if Kephar comes up, my, my guess, my thing is, is he's already been not allowed on that property, correct? Then I'm okay. I, I don't need...
So no trespassing.
Good, I don't need anybody. Good, I'm good.
There's three items on the quote that I want you to be, that make sure that you're aware of.
Okay.
Says, payment to contractor should be based on satisfactory completion of items one, two, and three. It means you have to complete all three of them.
Yep.
No partial payments allowed, meaning you can't just do item one and then walk away from the project.
Okay.
You're paying based on completing all three of them.
Okay.
And then the completion date before October 1st, but, so I guess the main, there were two that I wanted you to be clear about.
Money's not an issue by no means, so, uh, I'll be able to finance it myself, so. Money's not an issue. Good.
Okay, well, my, my point was that you have to do all three, three items. That's the deal.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Do you have a motion? Any of these bids? The lowest one was 52,148.96 cents. The highest one was 150,000.
I made a motion to accept the low bid of 52,148.96 to Mr. Alder Savage.
Have motion in the second?
I'll second, but then we have more discussion.
Have motion and a second. Any other discussion?
You will not be able to start until the county attorney and the sheriff, uh, resolve what they have going on.
Okay, and another question to that is, is could them be removed and put on a property while that is taking place? Or do, do, does it have to be on the property, the vehicles have to stay on the property of where? Cause I can have, they're gonna property where I can store them if I needed to.
You will have to talk with the sheriff and the county attorney.
And then when you guys are pushing that out, does that mean that my end dates get pushed out too? I mean, you're crunching me into a time and that's a lot of, uh, a lot of job. I mean, I've done jobs like this before, but I've never been crunched for time, like, you know what I mean? So you're crunching me and the front side, what about the backside?
I don't think we should allow it to extend, yeah.
Whatever, shorten another property that has to be... And then what about, about the seat then? Is, is that okay to, to seat it in October, November? Is that, is that, I mean, you're getting, you know what I'm saying? If it's fun, the weather, I mean, I don't know, so.
Yeah, and that's a good time to seat in the fall.
Good, I'm just thinking of the weather, if you don't know the weather, so.
I think if you have two and a half months to get it done.
Yeah, I guess I would rather, rather than just allowing it right now, that's something that we can discuss during the summer. I mean, I'd, uh...
Just let me know and I, I, I'll get started right away, so.
That's where we're, we're talking 10 days, right? Or what?
Oh, whatever Aaron decides.
But yeah, my code is 10 days, we're gonna survive, but hopefully per direction from Aaron. Cause ultimately he'll have to defend whatever we do, yeah. We're not difficult to work with, but I also don't wanna just be changing things on day one. I mean, the, we don't, we don't do that with, uh, DOT projects, you know, that's, so.
Good.
We can discuss that as things are one.
And all I ask is if, if it takes a while, I, I, I need some time on the backside.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I have higher talent.
I could get you the cars today, I would.
Okay.
So it's not...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, oh, very good.
Alright, so...
Good. Is, is that semi trailer considered a vehicle?
There's a registration on it.
There is?
I don't know.
Cause I was just thinking, we were just saying, I could get started and then figure out the vehicles? Just to, I mean, you know what I mean? Or do you wanna wait for the vehicles? I mean, it's not just vehicles that need to be done. There's a lot of stuff there.
Something's aboard?
Yeah, that's, that's what I would just, yeah.
You're saying words around vehicles?
Yeah, cause there's that whole back row where that, the, the back row is where the trees are. That's all just...
As long as you don't damage...
Garbage. It's either garbage to the dump or garbage to the mill. You know what I mean? It's garbage.
As long as you don't damage something that we've been talking, I mean, you can't...
The vehicles. Okay.
Be good, but...
And then what about, just, I'm just gonna ask, what about the contents inside the vehicles? He's got every bus from the front to back full of garbage. Carpage. You know, he's got that stuff full, so, so I'm the bus owner, I'm gonna say, yeah, I want my bus back, but what about all that? You know what I mean? They're gonna like, um, you know, I, I don't know. I just, do I clear them out? No? You know, that's, that's the question.
Guess we have to get this thing solved first, as far as they want them.
Good.
I think it'd be reasonable to start and then just leave the vehicles as is and, you know, it takes 10 days to...
I won't, if, if, if you guys okay me to start, you, you got my word, I will not touch the vehicles. I'll work around them. I'll do what I gotta do.
Sounds good.
Should we be requiring receipts from him for the solid waste or anything?
See, why?
In my bed, right?
We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion?
Record call. Tom.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Sidney.
Bye.
Jim.
Bye.
We'll get passes. Congratulations.
You know that it says to take it to authorized locations, can't take it to another farmstead or something?
Yeah, no, it's dump or my, my, I haven't salvaged here yet.
Yeah.
Good. And just like, no, I'm not gonna allow Kephar to come on that property. I'm not gonna need, no one says, I'm just gonna tell him he was, he had his chance. So that's my, my attack, so.
Right.
Good.
Discussion possible action on hiring an HR attorney? Might have all of this, Alders and Cooney, is that right?
Yeah, Alders and Cooney. Every stop with them just because of other, there's a number, a lot of other counties that use them. At the meeting I was at in Alborra, cause, uh, Ohio Juvenile Detention uses them also. They have a employment issue that very well professionally taken care of. And somebody wondered if there's content of interest, cause another, a lot of other counties use it, but it's two separate boards, so. So I just know we could've used one, probably four times in the last three and a half years. I think it would've been to our benefit, we could've saved money.
So we got, we got this proposal yesterday afternoon and I didn't have a lot of time to really work at it. But I did send a email to Renee Van Broken.
Yep.
And, uh, so she replied to me this morning. I wondered if she provides HR services and she says, yes, I do provide human resource services and provided them for Iowa counties for 35 years. I've always handled any HR questions from Metro County Department heads because the county has utilized her as collective bargaining services. She said that, I asked her to send a, a separate proposal for, uh, she said she will send that.
But she's not in legal counsel.
She's, excuse me, I'm not done there, so. She's, uh, doesn't have the internet services down in the Moana granted moment because of the storm, so she hasn't sent that. So here's probably the key thing that she commented. So she sent this also just a little bit ago. It may be helpful for you and the board to know that I do provide HR services and collective bargaining services to Worth County. They have also established a ratio, a relationship with Alders that allows them to use their legal services if something occurs that requires legal services. I've handled the HR and bargaining, but there is a resource established for legal assistance. That way the county only incurs legal services, legal service costs if they are in need of them. It doesn't happen often, but it's available if the need arises. The county doesn't incur any cost for legal assistance unless and if they are needed. So, and in that other email, she kinda elaborated to this is that she works a lot cheaper than what Alders does. So, we could still have HR services utilizing her and then if it turned into a legal issue, then we could use Alders for the legal side of it. It's her opinion.
And that's up this quote as far as for a legal side, legal opinion on HR issues, which we have had some that I don't know that she could've handled, but I think you need the legal part of it, so. Yeah, this is just a quote. It's, it's a per hour thing. If you don't use them, you don't pay. If you need them, they're there. That's all this is. Like I said, it's probably four times in the last three years, so it's not gonna be a monthly thing. Might, might not be a yearly thing. Just depends on how things go with, with employment issues, you know? So, that's all this is, just a, for the legal part of it, yeah.
I, this came right before I was ready to leave yesterday, so I read it, printed it off. Went through it quite rapidly. Now Jim's throwing this on. Could we, could we table this a week or, so I could get Renee Van Broken's email or, you know, send us and then I could kinda go through this. I just did it quickly and I, for the county, I, I maybe we could just table for a week and so I could look at it a little closer.
Don't we use, I mean, we've got bargaining in here already, so don't we automatically use her anyway?
Yes, for that part, but I mean, there's been other...
Right, 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 right.
Things where we need it.
So we already have kind of, yeah, I'm not, I'm just...
We don't, I'm saying to get rid of her.
We already have HR contact already, right? Cause that's what we do in Worth County. We, we use her for any kind of question that comes up that's employee, employee related until it becomes something bigger.
This is just for the bigger items that we've had. That's what, cause I think we had this for the bigger items to save this money.
No. I'm not opposed to them. I'm just saying that we can say, I know, I just don't wanna abandon her because she's much a lot cheaper than...
Right.
They were, uh, $340 an hour and that's...
$300.
$340 an hour, travel time even, so it cost them to drive up here and back. We're looking at 700 bucks, just to...
But not like they don't, they wouldn't have to drive up here and...
There is, she's cheaper, that's all.
Yep.
I just forward it to you.
We're not on a time crunch or anything, so.
No, no. I didn't say to get rid of Renee. Keep her for what she does, but we'll have to leave her.
I'm trying to remember if her fees, even she does the bargaining stuff, if some of her fees that we pay every year do include some of those contacts from here once in a while. I, I don't remember that for sure, but I know that we always email back and forth or have a phone call and something comes up, but...
Yeah.
I don't know. We've never really been, directed charge for those conversations. It's maybe all part of her service. Yeah, she, she said that as far as handled HR questions from department heads because the county has utilized collective bargaining services, so. So then that's part of her.
Will I have a motion table for a week or what? I don't know.
I can make a motion on the table for a week?
Well, maybe motions are second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Record call. Jim.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Mark.
Right.
Sidney.
Put it on to next week then?
Perfect. Shannon did bring down here updated. Month they reported, they want to...
A month of June, it looks like $1,220,456.2. Chad before.
I'll make a motion.
A motion, or second?
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion?
Record call. Tom.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Sidney.
Bye.
Jim.
Hi.
A month of June, alright. Perfect. Group agreements to give contributions. Go through all of you one by one? Go through all of you one by one, probably. Resolution number twelve thirty dash twenty-four for healthy harvest in an amount of three thousand, one hundred dollars.
Move to approve twelve thirty dash twenty-four.
Have motions our second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Next, we have resolution twelve thirty-one dash twenty-four for R S V P for five thousand dollars. Childhood literacy for the schools, a motion.
Motion.
Yep, motion is our second.
I'll second.
I'm second, any other discussion?
We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Jim.
Aye.
Next one is twelve thirty-two dash twenty-four. Request for nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars for Elder Bridge.
Did you say that amount again?
Sure, nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars.
I'll move to make that motion.
Motion is our second.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Jim. Bye. Todd.
Aye.
Next one is resolution twelve thirty-three dash twenty-four for a thousand dollars crisis intervention service. Move to approve. Motion is our second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. Next is twelve thirty-four dash twenty-four for two thousand dollars for NICO, housing trust fund.
I'll move to make that motion.
Motion is our second.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Sidney.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. And then we have twelve thirty-five dash twenty-four for five hundred dollars for Central Iowa Tourism Region.
Rachel, I think you told me, but I forgot, did they send a request or how did that work?
Yes, they sent a bill, an invoice.
Okay.
And so this is one that previously they always have sent an invoice, but we haven't done a resolution for it, like last year when we started giving contributions.
Alright, so where does this actually go to?
We're in, who, the treasurer, I guess you'd say, is in Webster City. I don't remember exactly how many counties are included in this Central Iowa Tourism. I think there may be four different regions in Iowa, I looked up, I can't remember exactly.
So is it just an invoice or does it give an explanation on what they did?
Yeah, it's an invoice.
I mean, is there an explanation and then for us?
I remember it states that they work closely with the communities for animal attractions and visitor services for the different counties.
Do they actually do anything for Mitchell County, I don't know, or?
That's a good question.
Yeah, they're a long ways away, you know, I mean, it's, it's these local things, more important than Webster City, but.
I, I guess I would, I would like to hear a voice from them as far as, yeah, this is what we do for you. Rather than just sending us an invoice.
Do you recall if it's something that they've always?
They've always did.
Did they do anything for the fair board, Todd, do they know?
I have, I can't say this for sure, but it seems like in the last three years, it seems to me somebody came up here and talked one time. That's why we continued it, but, but I, I can't recall if it was during the budget time or.
They have something that, that says in some book or whatever that Mitchell County has great parks and you can go kayak and they have some bike trails and adequate, adequate places to stay and great places to eat, you know? That's, that's good, but if, I would like to hear them say that, they're doing something, yeah.
Table it, turn it down, or whatever you wish.
I see there's, it's a matching funds program. I, I would be willing to call and talk to them, if you want to do that and it just seems to me we, somebody's been here on this before, but it's. So yeah, if you, if somebody want to table it or prove it, now call them or.
On their websites, they have, I just typed into Mitchell, said Mitchell County Historical Museum, the nature center. They have places to go, so they have camps, arts. You can, it's pretty much a big travel guide for.
So we're in there.
So we're on their website. Just things to do, places to go, plan a trip, travel guide of Iowa. Maybe if you did a little research on their website page, maybe.
Do you want to call Todd? Just chatting. Here.
I'm sure they have local brewers, like limestone boulders on here. Camping grounds.
Hey, look. Motion?
That Rachel's either gonna mess you up with our resolution numbers?
No, I'll update the next one, twelve thirty-five.
The next one will be twelve thirty-five then?
Yep. Todd's been.
Motion table it then? So, yeah.
Motion is our second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
We'll call Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye.
Todd, get home. So this is twelve thirty-five?
Yep.
Resolution twelve thirty-five dash twenty-four for soil and water conservation for nine thousand dollars for water sampling. So, the motion is our second.
Okay.
Motion second, any other discussion?
We'll call Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Bye. Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
And that is all. Items of note, meetings attended?
I had two, had a region two policy board meeting. Approved the T P W P and the tip. Resolutions. And then the DOT commented in regards to stuff that's going on in the area. Said there's gonna be a large number of bridge, bridge deck overlays that are gonna be happening in this district. And then she talked a little bit about the Floyd on ramp, off ramp to the avenue. And they plan to do some improvements so people are better informed where to go to get back on the avenue. There's been a lot of turnarounds under the overpass turnaround, these, these people's private driveway. And so they plan on doing some signage and some painting and other things that we did in order to try to solve that problem. Uh, there's a thirty-five million dollar grant from the Feds to the state. That's gonna be used for small urban areas and Osage is one of those that's on that list. What's being planned and, and some of the people know this anyway, I guess, but I'll just mention it. So what's gonna be happening in Osage is sidewalk improvements and on two eighteen, it'll be from Maine to the north side of Poplar Street. On Highway nine, it's from Kirkwood to east of Fourteenth Street. So pretty much follow Maine. Uh, then we have Mel and Phil on two eighteen from Chase to Poplar, Mel and Phil is where you build a consisting asphalt service and then uh, replace it with new H M A asphalt paving. Um, then there'll be P C C paving uh, from nine on nine from Kirkwood First Street and then P C C patching from two eighteen, Maine to Chase Street. So there'll be some work being done in Osage coming up. And then I had a city council meeting last night, Osage City Council Meeting. Talked about the Osage co-op elevator expansion, authorize some transfer funds, fire work permit, just a lot of general business, but all stuff that will be done, so that's, that's what I had.
I had NICO in Mason City. We went over hazmat team report, they had a very busy quarter with training. The hospital actually had a chemical issue, but they had to go in and take care of as well as Chris had an issue over in Howard County with chlorine issue in Riceville, so. What else? Went over the budget, discussion about renewing CDs.
I had a conservation board meeting, I went over that, so.
Had a Hardland insurance meeting and made a copy of this. Next year they're gonna, will be rebate or reimburse the counties if they have no loss on Workman's complaint. And you can see the different counties, how much they were gonna get and we have been terrible. We had two big Workman's complaints this last year and that kind of hurt us pretty good, so. That's about it. I had none. Public comments, any public comments?
Can I ask, the, the entity that got the nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars, I didn't understand who that was.
Soil and Water Conservation?
No, they had.
That's not.
That was a bridge. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Alright, any other? During the meeting at nine thirty-three?